Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, February 3rd, 2020. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Village Clerk Promot Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The meeting will come to order, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Eldridge?
Here.
Trustee Bromberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Venduzen?
Here, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, a motion would be in order. Trustee, our work seconded by trustee Sutker. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Venduzen?
Aye, the motion passes. With that vote, the village board has confirmed 14 new commissioners. The commissions provide an invaluable service. We have nearly 300 residents who are part of 15 village commissions. And often, they do a lot of the quiet work that makes the village hum. I kind of like to look at the village as a three-legged stool. There are the elected officials, our appointed professional staff, and we have with, and also, our volunteer commissioners. Just to give you an idea of the effectiveness of our commissions, just this afternoon, as I was reviewing for the last time the agenda, I jotted these down. Tobacco 21. Some of you may remember the state legislature this last year passed a law boosting the age from 18 to 21 to purchase tobacco products. That originated with our Board of Health. We don't know, we'll never know, how many lives have been saved by that. But their efforts convinced the state legislature. Couple meetings ago, the village board authorized the manager to enter into a contract with collective resources, which will now help us initiate a food recycling program in the village. Without the help of our commissions, the Skokie Welcomes Everyone program could never have succeeded. Some of you may recall, a couple years ago, some of our residents felt threatened because of the atmosphere at the national level. And because of members of some of our commissions, in addition to our village staff and elected officials, we launched a Skokie Welcomes Everyone program to give reassurance to our neighbors and all of our friends that we appreciate each other. Almost every block in the village had at least one sign. Most blocks had more than one. Every year, our Beautification Commission gives out annual awards to those houses which have put themselves as a model for taking care of their property. The SOAR program, which is done by our Fine Arts Commission, singles out our schools and for their artistic endeavors, and get anywhere in the neighborhood of 500 adults to come to the Performing Arts Center to view the artwork. We have an annual science award for young students. One year, one of our students, two years ago, is working, he's a senior in high school, working on creating logarithms to be able to predict pneumonia and what type of pneumonia and what types of cures or preventatives might be possible. This is a senior in high school. I had no idea what he was talking about when he was explaining it to me. I just tried to just go, yes, yes, congratulations, pat him on the back. Wonderful young man. He's off, I believe, at one of the Ivy League schools. The farmer's market, many people here enjoy the farmer's market, that's part of our Consumer Affairs Commission. This evening, you will hear from our Plan Commission, our Land Use and Economic Development Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. We have annual block parties, upwards of 60 block parties throughout the village, all throughout the summer. And these are just small number of examples of what our commissions do. This evening, we have with us some of the new appointees, and I would like to call out your name, just ask you to please stand and be recognized. And the Beautification and Improvement Commission, Barbara Rubens. Is Barbara here? She is not. Is Dr. Tapousian here? She is being appointed emeritus. She has served on the Board of Health, I believe, close to 20-plus years. Family Services, Arnold Oskin. I know Arnold is here, I saw him. Thank you. Michael Steele and Melissa Verch. In fact, it was the Commission of Family Services in the Human Relations Commission, Sheila Crumright. These two commissions, in particular, did yeoman service on the Skokie Welcomes Everyone program, and we're grateful to all the work they put in. Ted Levine, Consumer Affairs. Ted, thank you. And our Sustainable Environmental Advisory Commission, Emily Okalo. I've been working on getting Emily on the Environmental Commission for, what was it? Was it six months ago or a year? Emily helped create a tree planting program at Westfield Old Orchard, and I was very impressed. Leslie, I think you were there, were you not?
Yes.
Yes, for the tree planting. And so I, it just goes to show persistence, you just keep asking somebody, and after a while, they just finally say, okay, okay, okay. So Emily, welcome and thank you. Is Christopher O. here? We weren't sure if he was going to be able to make it this evening. Also, Chairman Harold Primack is being reappointed, has been reappointed, and Paul, look, unfortunately, Paul is sick this evening and won't be able to do the Plan Commission case. But thank you all for the work that you are going to be doing, and we will be putting you to work very soon. The letters to your chairs are in the mail, so you will be hearing shortly, and thank you for your spirit, and we look forward to seeing you at future programs. Next item on the agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Venduzen, and good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding a TIF rehabilitation grant for Sketchbook Brewing in Skokie at 4901 Main Street. The village offers a downtown incentives program to attract and retain retailers, restaurants, and other commercial users in downtown Skokie. The founders and owners of Sketchbook Brewing, Mr. Sean Ducker and Mr. Caesar Mahron, excuse me, are choosing Skokie to expand its brewing capacity and to locate an additional taproom. Sketchbook Brewing Company was established in 2014 and has quickly become a highly popular purveyor of locally brewed and regionally distributed beer. Mr. Mark McCracken, a longtime owner of the property at 4901 Main Street, and P.S., greetings, has requested financial assistance to convert vacant space within his building to accommodate Sketchbook's need for a new brewing facility and taproom. Mr. McCracken's tenants, the Sketchbook Brewing Company, necessitate a significant buildout of the leased space, including a complete gut rehab of the two-story interior, demolition, taproom, office, event space buildout, including acoustical, lighting, and audio systems, construction of the two new bathrooms, framing and drywall, new doors and glazing, system overlooking the brewery, repair and polishing of existing flooring, painting, new acoustical ceilings, and upgraded fire protection, alarm, HVAC, electrical, plumbing services, as well as other related equipment and improvements. Scheduled improvements for the exterior facade will include the following: exterior doors and window replacement, reinforcement, and cladding of existing canopy, and the furnishing and installation of new exterior facade. The total rehabilitation cost is approximately $755,000. The maximum grant under the village's program will be $153,000, which includes an additional $3,000 in reimbursable architectural fees. Additional purchases to be made by the Sketchbook team, including brew house equipment for 10 fermentation tanks, boilers, chillers, coolers, grain silo, and lab equipment, plus installation costs, along with taproom furniture and fixtures, will total over $600,000, for a total investment of over $1.3 million. Grant funds will be transferred on a rebate basis following completion of all work, proof of payments to all contractors, and actual operation of the new business. The rehab work for the brewing and initial taproom portions of the project are planned to be complete by April 30th. The remaining portion of the bar and taproom is estimated to be complete by midsummer. Leslie Murphy, the village's economic development specialist, has been working with both Sketchbook and Mark McCracken. Both are with us this evening, Sean and Mark, welcome. If you would stand, just so people know who you are. Thank you for being here this evening. And so I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval of the interior and exterior rehab improvement grant, estimated at a not-to-exceed amount of $153,000.
Motion is in order. Trustee Bromberg, seconded by trustee Klein. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Roberts?
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for choosing Skokie and investing in Skokie. Leslie, I think you can anticipate my question, but just for our residents, can you just speak to a little bit of how we use our TIF funds and how this is a good example, how I consider this not a handout, it's an investment that multiplies and brings in private investment into our community. Can you explain that a little bit, and how many times have we successfully used this over the past few years, please?
Be happy to, trustee Roberts. The village of Skokie has been a very strong steward of the use of tax increment finance, and particularly in our downtown. When this downtown TIF district was first established, it was primarily designed to encourage a lot of the existing property owners to make some investments, create a stronger environment for investment, maybe get some new tenants here and there. And I think for the first few years after it was established in 1990, we had some success with some of the older property owners and businesses. Then there was sort of a quiet period where a lot of the development that was coming in, that included a lot of the apartment buildings, and then Aldi and a few other larger investments. About 20, 2008, just coming out of the recession, it started to become clear that we were nearing the second half of the downtown tax increment financing district, and the new science and technology TIF district was being established. So it kind of put the spotlight back on a lot of the existing property owners. So a more intense effort was begun sometime in the late 2000s to rediscuss the idea of partnering with property owners to get more tenants in, and the first direct recipient at that time was the Skokie Theater. There were some new proposed owners who wanted to invest about $500,000 into the Skokie Theater, which needed it at the time, and the village saw to it that $100,000 grant would make a nice investment. Again, the public investment is there to induce the private investment to invest, hopefully a lot further than that. So that was kind of the new resurgence of our interior rehab and exterior facade renovation program. Since that time, we've invested in an additional 17 businesses, some of which have, are still there, some of which have converted into a newer user. For instance, a good example is the Cobble House. They received an incentive grant. They were here for seven years, and then they moved to another community. And, but very soon afterwards, because of the investment that was made into that space, it made it much more desirable for a tenant to come in and retake that space. So the last three inducement that we've done within the downtown have been much larger in scale, if you will. They've included Ignite Gaming, which was a similar amount that we're going to be granting to Sketchbook Brewery this evening. And then Mark McCracken was actually a recipient in response to a reinvestment into the building that he owns, he actually owns two buildings, but because of a large-scale Walmart contract, he needed to do a lot more to retrofit that building. And so we were able to assist on the exterior, make it look better, and to make it more attractive for your employees inside. So this is our 19th interior and exterior rehab grant. We've already got a few others in the queue as the TIF is winding down, but we are, take great pride and pleasure in the fact that a well-established brewery, who we've been trying to get anyone, you know, but we really hit a home run with someone that's been around for a while and is so wildly popular already in Evanston, to have them make Skokie an additional home for them. So that's kind of how it works.
And that doesn't include all of the companies that are in the Illinois Science and Technology part?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and again, they were the recipient primarily of the work that was done in 2005, when the village issued, you know, several bond issues and helped tear down buildings and what have you. But these direct incentives have made our downtown a much more robust. We're still getting there, but with TIF, we're really leveraging a lot of our public dollars very wisely.
Thank you.
Thanks for the great explanation, Leslie. Mark, I had the privilege of touring your facility, and you did a fantastic job with the rehabbing of it, and obviously, very happy that Sketchbook is coming, and just really looking forward to Sean and Mark working together on seeing what you're gonna, the finished product, really looking forward to it like everyone else is. And anyone who hasn't gone to Sketchbook, it's not in Skokie, but it's okay to go to Sketchbook and see what's coming.
Little homework, right?
Thank you for the endorsement.
I just, I just want to, so would there be, there's going to be, you estimate 12 to 15 full and part-time employees?
Within the first five years of stabilization?
Yeah, that's probably pretty accurate. If you recall back at the house, in front of the house, and brewery proper, there will be about a half a dozen, and then in the, in front of the house and the taproom, probably another half a dozen.
Will there be food service at all?
We'll do food trucks, we'll do, we'll invite local restaurants to do kind of pop-up things, which is what we've been very successfully adding out. And we'll, we'll do kind of a variety of snacks.
Cheese curds.
They're delicious. No, they're, they're out of this world, yeah, they're really good.
Come in. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Venduzen?
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Item B is regarding an Illinois Department of Transportation, commonly referred to as IDOT, Dempster Street, Skokie Boulevard, and Nile Center Road Improvement Project. In order to facilitate traffic flow and ensure safety to the motoring public, IDOT plans to improve the intersections of Dempster Street at Skokie Boulevard, Dempster Street at Nile Center Road, and Skokie Boulevard at Nile Center Road. This busy area will undergo the installation of several right-turn lanes, modernized traffic signals, and stormwater improvements. After the project is completed, IDOT will continue to maintain the roadway and the traffic signals, except for village items such as certain pavement maintenance along Dempster Street, and the cost of maintenance of the emergency vehicle preemption system. The village will also be responsible for the relocation of the streetlights and adjustment of the water main. The total cost of the project is just over $4 million. The village's share is $304,635, which is allocated in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Program, CIP budget. In order to move forward with this project, the village must enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the IDOT. Mayor and board approval of the resolution authorizing this agreement is respectfully requested.
Motion is in order. Trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee Roberts. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Roberts?
Eric, could you just tell us about the timeline, please, and when the work is done, I'm sure there's plans that, it's a pretty major intersection in terms of how traffic is going to be handled during that construction time?
Sure. The set of plans for this project's, right now, it's 211 pages long, it's pretty robust, and a lot of that is dedicated towards traffic control throughout the project. The main, for the timeline, there's roughly, there's essentially two phases. The first phase is utility adjustments, or moving stuff out of the way. So your ComEd, your NICOR, village light poles are moved as part of this project, there's water main adjustments, any kind of fiber that has to be moved. That's going to be done this first year, 2020. The main construction should happen in 2021, that's the IDOT schedule right now. This is a really good project, a lot of right-turn lanes are going to be installed through this area, brand-new traffic signals, there's some stormwater improvements, too, that have been included by the state.
Trustee?
Eric, are the streets themselves going to be changing, or just the signaling?
Well, I have, actually I have a picture I'll put on the screen. Zoom in a little bit, because it's, I highlighted, so looking at the picture, this is Skokie Boulevard, this is Dempster Street, Nile Center Road, north is up. The lanes remain the same, there's still two lanes on Skokie Boulevard, two lanes on Dempster. However, we're adding these right-turn lanes to help move traffic through. There's still one left turn lane, this is the overwise, there's a right turn lane to move traffic. Nile Center Road's really interesting, right now it's sort of two lanes each way, there's going to be a dedicated left turn lane, a through lane, and a right turn lane, with the new signals, with arrows to help everyone through. So traffic is going to move much better, safer.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Sutker?
So how is our portion determined?
So we're responsible for the decorative streetlights. Because of these right-turn lanes, right now, where they're at, they have to be moved. So we're responsible for those costs. They were installed with our projects 10 years ago. We're responsible for our water main, there's some adjustments that have to be made, and then the emergency vehicle preemption for the fire trucks going, the emergency vehicles, those are our costs that are...
So that's what the 304,000?
That's the 300,000. And I think that might be a little high, I think it's a little high, because we have the light poles, light poles will just take them down, store them, they'll put them back up. It's new foundations, it's new conduits, that kind of stuff. But we have, IDOT has to make sure they get recruited for stuff, that's our responsibility. That's the reason for that.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Klein?
Eric, I have a question about the gridlock that occurs on Dempster going eastbound, once it hits Nile Center, crosses over, there's, that's a short block there, Skokie Boulevard, and then with the timing of the lights, it always backs up, and then we have a problem with people going north on Nile Center because they get caught. So can you address that, if you don't mind?
Well, sure, the turn lanes are all being increased, so there's going to be more storage, so we're going to have even greater capacity at every intersection. All the new signals will be optimized, there's limitations to how much they can be optimized now, just, they're so old. Right now, they are connected, there's a couple circuits on Dempster Street, one runs from essentially Lockwood to Skokie Boulevard, and then there's another circuit further east, but everything will be modernized to make that a little bit better. There are times during the day, rush hour, where, you know, there's only so much you can do, but what they're doing is going to make some big improvements to the intersection.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Venduzen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Item C is regarding a Skokie Green Infrastructure Grant, joint agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. The village of Skokie recently received notice that we will be receiving funding from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago, or MWRD, to aid in the construction of green infrastructure. Three alleys were selected to be reconstructed as permeable alleys. These alleys currently show deterioration with existing drainage issues, or were oiled alleys, which require significant maintenance. This work will improve drainage of stormwater, as well as reduce the flow of stormwater into the combined sewers. The total cost of the project is $580,000, and the grant amount is for $190,000. At this time, the execution of a grant agreement with the MWRD is necessary in order to proceed. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval of the resolution authorizing the execution of this agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, Greater Chicago.
Motion, and the manager's recommendation, and the MWRDGC grant is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Sutker?
So these are the same alleys that we have now in certain places, correct?
They are.
I know I've seen, there's, are there two of them, or?
We have a picture that we can put up on the...
You know what, I don't have the...
We don't have...
We actually, we have, there's...
Three?
There's more than three.
Oh.
Our first project, we installed at four, locate four, two long alleys, two short alleys, sort of east of Skokie Boulevard, between Oakton Street and Main. With the MGM project, we got a couple more installed, too. So there's, those were two, so that's four, six, this will be up to nine now.
Okay.
There's a photo in your...
I know, I've seen the photo, plus I've walked by it, too, the one up by Skokie Boulevard. That was the first one, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because I remember when that first was done, it's like an experiment sort of thing, right?
Yeah, that is another grant. So this is a picture, they're very attractive. So they have the brick pavers on top, the water lands on the bricks, goes in between the gaps, and there's a very thick stone base that holds the water and lets the water slowly go into the ground beneath the bricks. Nothing, the bricks themselves aren't permeable, it just goes in between.
Right, so you, so there'll be nine of them in Skokie after, okay, thank you.
Trustee Roberts?
Erica, and I think you've, have you, as the village, identified where the new, three new alleys will be?
Sure.
What's the experience of the homeowners, the residents around the... What's the experience of the homeowners, the residents around the, has it been favorable?
It's a challenge, there's a lot of, we reach out, garbage is sometimes an issue, a lot of these, if you've had garbage in your alley, there's going to be a couple weeks where we're doing it to the street, so we're coordinating with the, the refuse at the same time. As long as we have progress going on, they're, they're, once they're done, they're, they're, the residents love them. It's, it's a challenge, though, because they are impassable during construction, with our stone base that's two feet deep, and then you do the excavating, you do the, the stone, you do, you have a concrete pour, more stone, and then the bricks, it, it takes a while. But yeah, I have a, a map that shows the ones we've identified, there's three, this is a sort of a blown-up map. These two up north, 8800 block, just west of Lincolnwood Drive, and the 9100 block east, or west of Ewing, they're all, they're concrete, they have drainage issues we cannot solve without, and, and the condition warrants reconstruction anyway, so this, these two are a great candidate for, for this program. We're going to make them permeable, and we're going to get a new alley out of it. The one to the south, east of Christiana, 8900 block, is a gravel alley now, it's lower than the streets to the north and south, so we'd have to install some drainage with the new alley, this will take care of it at the same time. Last year, we had a very wet spring, we were, we identified a lot of alleys that needed some work, these three were, are, are great candidates.
Call, Trustee Roberts.
So in the short term, it's more expensive, but in the long term, with maintenance and everything, it's a lot cheaper than, than the gravel, is that right?
It, yeah, with the gravel especially, these alleys, these gravel alleys that we do, we're, we're grading once or twice a year to, you know, limited success. We've been paving, oiled alleys, we've been chipping at them a little bit, they're, they're expensive, too, but these, these, these ones are, and then we have drainage problems that we end up having to do some inlet or catch basin to try and get the water away. This, it's all included with the, the alley, the water just falls in the, the earth, there is a drain, under-drain to take care of severe storms, some water may get to the sewer, but a lot of times, not a drop of water's going to make to the storm sewer.
Yes, if you would come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Sorry. Special guest. My name is David Crumryan, 7507 Lowell, and my question is, I've seen various places that have used these kind of things, what happens in the winter when you have a real freeze, does that require salt in addition to?
We still plow.
But if it freezes over, does this become a skating rink?
They actually melt faster, they have been, from what I've been noticed.
So you don't salt them?
I, I'd have to talk to Public Works if they salt them, I don't know if they salt regular alleys as it is.
I just wonder if it added to the salt.
Nope, oh, no, probably wouldn't, these, just the amount of alleys.
Good question. Call the roll, please.
I don't, I don't know if we have, salt any alleys, so.
Yeah, to, to my knowledge, we do not salt any alleys.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Vandus.
Aye, the motion passes.
And item D was approved as part of tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item is report of our Corporation Council, Michael Lorge.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, good evening, everyone. Item A on my agenda was adopted tonight as part of the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and that would conclude that matter. Item B on my agenda is a matter of housekeeping. Over the years, certain ordinances granting either special use permits or site plans, site plan approvals have become unnecessary, or no longer apply because the original need has either ended or changed. Staff has identified nineteen of such ordinances at this time, and these would be part of this ordinance in terms of repealing. The matter will return to this board for second reading on Tuesday, February 18th. If there are no questions on that, as to item C, I would respectfully request this evening that we take no action on item C. We will be working with our police department to gather some additional supporting data for submission to the board at a later time. That would conclude my report.
Thank you. Next item is report of our Plan Commission. Matt Branmeyer will do the honors this evening. Chairman Paul Luke is ill and unable to be with us. Matt, welcome.
Thank you, it's my first time presenting in front of the village board.
No pressure.
What is the, and I don't know all the controls, help me with the zoom, which one is there?
There we go.
Okay, real easy one tonight, it's just an alley vacation. You can see on the exhibit, the alley is bounded by Laramie on the west, Leamington on the east, Gulf Road on the north, and here is that alley in question. It's part of the village's program to vacate alleys that are unimproved and essentially unused. So the Plan Commission recommended approval at their, at their January 2nd meeting, and it was six ayes and zero nays. We request approval as well.
A motion on Plan Commission Case 2019-45P, alley vacation is in order. Trustee Sutker, Trustee Bromberg, are there any comments or questions on the alley vacation? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Vandus.
Aye, Matt, great persuasive job. Thank you. Thank you. You can tell Paul it was a tough audience, but you overcame it, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the 2020-2021 CDBG Grant Hearing, concluding hearing number three, Carrie Haberstein.
Good evening. As the mayor said, tonight is the third and final public hearing for determining funding awards for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program year for 2020-21, it's a mouthful. The proposed funding amounts and project summaries were forwarded to the board for this hearing, along with a chart listing the funding requests and the recommended funding amounts. Also forwarded was the annual matrix showing the historical funding allocations to all agencies and organizations that have ever received CDBG funding from the village, including the recommended funding for the coming year. We did not recommend funding for all the proposals, and I'll explain that in further detail along with this presentation. Staff from the Human Services Division and Health Department reviewed the public service proposals and helped shape the staff recommendations regarding such activities. And site visits were made by community development staff to the locations for which rehab or capital improvement funds were requested. Funding for recommendations taken to account existing conditions, immediacy of the problem, necessity of the public services, coordination with the work of the village's Human Services Division, priorities of the village's five-year consolidated plan, which will be coming up, and conformance with the CDBG program and village recommendations. With that, so we do have another hearing scheduled for March 2nd for the actual plans themselves for the next five years, and then also the one-year action plan, which will incorporate tonight's budget. For the next five years, we, at this point, plan on retaining our vision statement from the last five years of Skokie's CDBG program. We'll provide a better quality of life for low and moderate income residents through bricks and mortar projects and service activities. We are focusing on the same five goals, tweaking the language a little bit, but we have five capital improvements goals, especially since this program was initial, initially planned for more bricks and mortar or construction-type projects instead of services. So ensure housing is affordable, accessible, and sustainable, improve infrastructure, improve facilities for services, provide financial assistance for programs and services, and then the planning and administration portion for the village. So this year, we're estimating the entitlement to be 600,000. We don't know what the amount will be, we're not sure when it will be announced either, but based on historic entitlement funding amounts, we're settling on 600, at least for now, with a lot of flexibility built in, which we'll go over in a little bit. We plan on also using 500,000 in unallocated funds, and a little over $8,000 in program income from this current year that we're in, for a grand total of over 658,000. So the distribution concept, much like the current year that we're in, we could have 20%, we didn't feel we needed the full amount, so we're taking a little bit off the admin, administration cap, and adding that to the public facilities and construction portion of the budget, and maximizing the public services cap since it's a much-needed amount, and so we're maximizing it as best we can. The budget distribution will be 110,000 for planning and administration, a little over 91,000 for public services, and over 450,000 for facilities and construction. I believe this is the fifth or sixth year where every dollar that HUD gives us, they put a timestamp on it, and we have to spend it within three years, or we have to give it back. So we tried to make sure we spend with a good pace, to make sure that, so far, we've kept our money, so, and been able to invest it into our low and moderate income residents. So planning administration, again, 110,000, 100 of that will be for program administration, so day-to-day activities, such as consolidated plan preparation, action plan, the year-end reports, pre-construction meetings, other reports, and also just kind of daily postage and kind of miscellaneous stuff associated with program administration. Planning, we are currently in the middle of our regional assessment of fair housing, where Skokie's one of nineteen entities in Cook County, planning for fair housing. Side note for that, there is an, one additional public hearing that's anticipated in maybe April or May, so just to put you on notice, you'll see me again in the spring. But the report should be complete in summer 2020. It's not ideal, because it should have been done before we embarked on our five, this current five-year planning cycle, but HUD was supportive of the village partnering with all these other entities in the region to have a comprehensive look at fair housing in the county, so they were okay with us kind of not going in order, and if necessary, we'll make any changes to our five-year consolidated plan, preferably probably in the December public hearing if necessary, but as far as the, the five-year plan, we're hoping to kind of adopt it by reference next month, and then see where it goes from there. Public services, we had over $200,000 in requests, so we had to cut more than half of what was requested. So the 91-250 is 15% of the 600,000 estimated entitlement amount, plus the program income mentioned earlier, so definitely reductions are necessary. We can, we're continuing the tier system that we established during the, the five-year plan that's wrapping up, so we have a tier-one organization, the village depends on this organization on an almost daily basis. Tier-two, the village depends on this critical service more on an as-needed basis, ideally we wouldn't need their service, but when there's a crisis, then we're able to assist this organization. Tier-three, services are important, but maybe not as critical as tier-one and two, and then tier-four, other resources are available, or we, the CDBG funds are prioritized elsewhere. So our tier-one, our social worker, recommending 38,250 for the social worker position, providing counseling, referral, and case management services. The balance of the full-time salary for this position would come from the, the general fund, with the flexibility built in to the draft plan we'll discuss next month. Any, if we receive more than 600,000, I will put some of that, that 15% cap towards this position, and leave, hold everyone else as recommended for our budget tonight. Jewish Child and Family Services, $4,000 for a financial case manager to assist with accessing resources to regain and maintain financial stability for Skokie residents. Asian Human Services, $7,000 for the dental assistance services at their Lockwood location, so pediatric through geriatric, all sorts of dental service, especially those who cannot receive dental care through Medicaid. Meals on Wheels Northeast Illinois, or Northeastern Illinois, 500, whoa, 5,000 for meal delivery programs, which they also provide two meals per day, well-being checks, and shopping assistance services as other services. Assyrian Family Healthcare, Family Health Alliance, 500,000, my goodness, I'm giving away lots of money tonight, 5,000, to hire a part-time staff to help with the most vulnerable village residents, put towards a part-time phlebotomist and/or a part-time healthcare interpreter fluent in the Aramaic language. Metropolitan Family Services, 5,000 for counseling services, kind of focused around mental health care. Peer Services, $5,000 for a part-time treatment engagement and retention specialist for substance abuse outreach, assessment and treatment services for teens, families, and adults, and kind of going, coinciding with current events, some new focus will also be on the vaping crisis and the recent cannabis legalization as needed. The North Shore Senior Center, $8,000 for long-term case management and counseling services for homebound, homebound elderly and their families, they service quite a few village residents. Youth and Opportunity United, $5,000 to offset the costs associated with the youth development specialist at Lincoln Junior High, Old Orchard Junior High, and Edison Elementary for their after-school and summer programs, support services. In recent years, they've received other funding for their summer program, so we typically focus CDBG fundings during the school year. Tier-two organizations, Children's Advocacy Center, $3,000 towards an advocate counselor position, support child, supporting child victims of abuse and their non-offending family members with interviews, evaluations, and crisis intervention. $3,000 for the Harbor, for their emergency shelter and transitional housing services for runaway homeless and neglected teens and young adults, and their emergency shelter, youth in transition, and successful teens and effective parents programs. Open Communities, $3,000 for housing services with a focus on renter education, this may include information materials and/or rental counseling, they do have other services, just, we'll be working with HUD staff on making sure that we comply with all the different services and tracking the, the Skokie residents that they can help, but this is our preferred focus. Tier-three, Argentium, which is formerly SASE, we're recommending them as an alternate organization. If Skokie should receive at least $620,000 in entitlement funding, we would recommend $3,000 for Argentium, they're a senior connections program, and they establish senior and volunteer connections to minimize social isolation. And unfortunately, we can't fund everyone, so, excuse me, Center for Enriched Living, we feel that there are other several Skokie-based organizations and locations that provide comparable services, so we kind of went local with making recommendations, just so we... just so we can share the pot with other priorities. Tier-four. Our tier-four organizations, we're not recommending for funding. Northwest Compass, we felt that there were other more local resources that are available for the homeless and those at risk for homelessness. And then also, again, from a local perspective, the Suburban Primary Healthcare Council. There are Skokie, Evanston, and Niles-based locations that provide comparable services. Capital Improvements and Rehabilitation, there's no funding cap for this. Reductions are also necessary. This is the 10th year of the 20%, 25% grantee match. So for every, Skokie spends, helps with a project for 75%. And then the grant, the grantee puts 25% towards the project. We recommend $70,000 for the Single Family Home Repair Program. This is, I believe, the 36th year of the program. Grant payments are up to $12,000 for all eligible households. The homeowner enters into a 15-year agreement with the village. Past CDBG recipients may reapply. However, they must still be income-eligible. And they must repay the old balance first if it's within that 15-year window. Housing Opportunity Development Corporation, 16,800 for security cameras on their second Conrad Street location. We assisted with the same project at their neighboring building a couple of years ago. This would improve safety and security. It would be focused on the common areas, not like in the individual units. Affordable Housing Initiative. This would be focused on owner-occupied home repair, supporting maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of housing units that are affordable for low and moderate-income households. Our focus on this, which would be a little different from the Home Improvement Program, is, say, a cluster of homes is our focus for the next year just to see if the pilot program will work. Activities could include property acquisition. But our focus for the next year is to see if we can have some improvements in a more focused setting. Street Resurfacing, 220,000 to resurface Niles Avenue and Hull Street just east of here, south of Oakden and north of Lincoln Avenue. And they're, these, these streets are in a neighborhood that's eligible for, a low-income neighborhood that's eligible for CDBG funding. And the 50/50 Sidewalk Replacement Program, $3,000 for the Sears area, focus area is Gulf Road to the north, Church Street to the south, and the east and west village limits. The rest of the village may be eligible upon request as long as the income is deemed eligible. Turning Point, 30,800 for their building at 8324 Skokie Boulevard. The main part of the project would be rooftop HVAC replacement of their next most problematic unit. I guess it's quite big compared to the other ones that have been replaced recently, which would also include the hail and debris protection. And then also making improvements to their ADA, accessible entrance on the east side of the building facing Skokie Boulevard. $22,700 are recommended for shore at their 8350 Laramie Avenue location. It'd be components of their HVAC system. There are two large air-return fans that are deteriorating and in function, becoming very inefficient. And I think the building has at least 30 of these variable air volume boxes. So this will be just like the next two in a series of replacement. Search, 18,700 to provide an ADA ramp with landing at their group home at 8255 Enfield Avenue. It would provide a second means of ADA accessible egress for its supportive living residents. Orchard Village, 9,500 is recommended for two of their group homes, one on Laverne and one on Lowell Avenue. It would be to upgrade their electrical services. Both homes often or frequently have blown circuits when more than one item is in use. And I believe the Laverne house, actually, the circuit breakers, the parts are no longer available. So upgrading would be a good idea. So in the future, when something would happen, there would be parts to help fix it in the future. Asian Human Services, they're requesting $3,000 for exhaust fans. They have a total of three exhaust fans for their property at 8800 Lockwood Avenue. And two of them are no longer operational. So there's one that's kind of doing the work of three. So this would help with the indoor air at Asian Human Services. We also have two projects not recommended for funding. Wings Request for the flooring improvements. They weren't deemed urgent during the site visit. And we feel that there may be adjustments to the work scope. And so we would like them to do a little more research to understand if there's any structural issues in addition to the flooring replacement request before the project can move forward, at least with CDBG funding. And then the CJE Senior Life Village Center just behind Village Hall here. Although we were supportive of the roof coping project, the cost different, they received an estimate that included all the wage rates that would be required for CDBG and then got a quote without it. And based on the amount of money we felt we could actually put towards the project, they would be spending the same amount of money. So we felt that it would be better for them just to move forward with the project without CDB and CDBG involvement this year. We are building flexibility, again, in the budget plan, plus or minus 20%. So based on the 600,000 that we're estimating, we would need to do a substantial amendment. So I would have to come back before you if the entitlement funding is less than 480,000. And if, for some reason, we would get, receive seven, more than 720,000, we would not do a substantial amendment, public hearing. But we would just reinvest those funds in the following year. And if entitlement funding is less than the 600,000 that we budget, we would pursue an across-the-board adjustment. We would not reduce any of the budgeted items or activities less than 80%. And no amount would be less than 3,000. So there's a few here tonight that are at 3,000. So we'd hold them at 3,000 and proportionately reduce the others that are above. All right. And then if we have entitlement funding greater than 600,000, as mentioned before, Argentium is an alternate. So if we would receive at least 620,000, we'd recommend putting like the service cap towards that request. If, for some reason, it's just under 620,000 or much more than 620,000, the remaining cap, we'd put towards the social worker position. And then any remaining balance that could be like for construction, that sort of thing, we'd put towards the Affordable Housing Initiative. We don't submit our five-year consolidated plan or our one-year action plan until the funding amounts are known. So we can prepare now with our typical schedule as we've been doing long before I got here, over 10 years ago. But the typical deadline is March 17. The absolute latest we would submit it is August 17. So hopefully, this past year, we learned of the funding amount in April. So hopefully, it won't be past that again this year. So we'll be able to not be too far behind once the funding amount is announced. Are there any questions?
If I understand your spreadsheet on the CDBG suggested budget, the grand total is 658,335, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, but the total comes to 457,085. That's for the organizations, the not-for-profits, and some of the village services, correct?
Yeah, so the 450,000, 457,085, that's for like construction-related projects, like the street resurfacing, HVAC replacement, that sort of thing.
Okay. Motion is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by Trustee Bromberg. Are there any comments or questions? Fantastic job.
Thank you. There's a few others here who helped with this.
We call Carrie our miracle worker. I don't know how she does it every year. It's a great amount of work. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Since I'm on the board of one of the recipient organizations, I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Trustee Sutker.
I also am going to abstain. I'm a social worker for one of the agencies that I applied for a CDBG grant. Thanks.
Trustee Elrich.
And I will vote aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendish.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had an ulterior motive in pointing out the grand total numbers. It's a great deal of money. And a lot of the not-for-profit organizations who Carrie listed use this money to the great benefit of people in our community who often do not have resources where they can get help. This is all of which to encourage not just all of you to participate in the census, but to get your neighbors, your friends, everybody possible in the village. This is just one example of money that we receive from the US government, in this case, Housing and Urban Development, which is then in turn used for benefit of our community. But it's dependent on the census. It's a formula that comes to us. So Carrie does a great job. John does a great job on this. But we have all got to do an equally great job and make sure that we all participate in the census. And even if you're not from Skokie, participate in the census. It's important for the state. We are going to probably lose one congressional district out of 18. Probably not going to happen. But they're still telling us that there is the possibility we could lose a second congressional district. It's unlikely, but it's a possibility. And we simply need to get out. So Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you've done. Call the roll, please. Or did you already? Oh, okay. We're all set. Just occurred to me. I was thinking about the census. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board under citizen comment? Sure. If you would come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please. And while she is coming up to the microphone, I'd like to introduce somebody I see in the audience who's an important part of our village, Dr. Dave McWinnie. Dave, doctor, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Natalie Gillespie. I live at 9233 Ewing Avenue. Thank you for having this. This is really cool. I, I'm not sure how to do this. So please let me know if I'm doing this. You need to do something differently. But I'm here to request that you change the ordinance to allow chickens in people's backyards. I personally, I'm allergic to pretty much anything with fur. And I love animals. I've tried to keep all sorts of animals. And I have not been able to breathe. I would love to keep other birds, but they need a lot more attention and I work. And I want to see my son have the opportunity to raise an animal, be responsible, to learn where his food comes from and what the value is in the labor and the nutrition. I wanted to see if I was crazy. So I put a little petition up on change.org to see if anybody else was interested. And in just a couple of months, I got 143 signatures from Skokie residents. A bunch of people from Iceland and weird places, too. But 143 in Skokie. So I looked into the various benefits. There's less animal cruelty than factory farms. Chickens are fun and friendly and goofy. They can provide food security for struggling residents. It used to be the backbone of the local economy was people's food that they raised in their backyard. They could trade with their neighbors. It became something that was sort of a hallmark of more grim economic fortunes and got outlawed by a lot of municipalities as they became municipalities. And the farming industries boomed. So I know there's a lot of common concerns to address. Noise, female chickens are quieter than house cats. Male chickens are usually quieter than dogs. You don't need roosters to have eggs. And therefore, many municipalities only allow female chickens. Cleanliness, health, and smell. I would like to set licensing parameters that require education for chicken owners to prevent the overcrowding and poor upkeep that can be endemic to any kind of pet ownership. Vermin, when they're kept properly, chickens can defend their nests against rat and mice, rats and mice really effectively. They help claim fruits and vegetables and compost to help actually keep them from attracting vermin. Predators, the role of a rooster is to fight off predators to his flock. But hens are actually quite effective at defending themselves, too. Native predators like coyotes, hawks, raccoons will only really go after house pets and five-year-olds if they're really desperate or rabid. House pets don't lure these kinds of creatures to urban areas. They exist already. And good chicken-keeping practices like securing coops, chicken wire enclosures for younger chickens, and supervised free-ranging time are also very effective at deterring predators. End-of-life, it's kind of up to the municipality how you want to regulate the end-of-life. Some consider chickens to be the same as other pets with similar legislation. And others permit slaughter and processing of chickens at licensed slaughterhouses. Disease, salmonella is a common problem for commercial chicken producers as chickens contract salmonella from the mouse droppings that are mixed in with their feed. This is possible to pass from a mother chick to a, a mother hen to a chick as well. But it's much easier for the individual owners to vaccinate their chickens and to get their feed more secure so there's no mouse droppings. Currently, the Skokie ordinance reads, keeping livestock, no person shall keep or suffer to be kept any cattle, goats, horses, swine, poultry, or other livestock in the village. I've put together, let's see, zoom out, just a sample proposed amendment. I'm happy to do any kind of legwork or answer questions to gather resources if you have other questions. But I would respectfully ask that you look into the feasibility of changing this.
We can do that. We have already.
Okay.
That's the reason why we have the ordinance written as it is. We have been cautioned by our director of our health department that there are some very serious questions. I've talked to colleagues of mine in other communities that do permit. And I, the advice that I've been given and I've shared with our village manager is go real slow.
Okay.
What people frequently do is they jump in with enthusiasm. And after a year or so, they say, don't want to do this anymore. What am I going to do? And they take the chickens and they wind up in the Cook County Forest Preserve.
Absolutely.
And it becomes a problem. We can certainly go back and take another look at it. But I'm, and I'm only speaking for myself. I'm, and I'm only speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for John and our professional staff or any of my colleagues, but I'm very hesitant, particularly after talking to my colleagues. One of them, who I will not disclose, said to me, if I had it, if we had it to do overt, we wouldn't do it because of the problems that have arisen. Complaints from neighbors, abandoning the chickens, and they're winding up in the forest preserve, and we get phone calls, what are the chickens doing in the forest preserve? So there, there are some problems, but let us go back. We can take a look. And if you would give us a copy of your proposed amendment, we will look at it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If a trial basis makes sense, that works great, too.
What was your first name again?
Natalie.
Natalie.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Good job. Good job. You did a good job. Perfect. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If not, Trustee Bromberg.
Motion to adjourn.
Excuse me.